Stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, good morning. Welcome to the Lewis and Clark County Commissioners' Public Meeting of May 23, 2024. I am Candace Payne. I will be chairing this little horse race today. And I need to introduce people, I'm told. Everybody knows our old friend, Commissioner Tom Rolfe, to my left. And to his left is Nadine McCarthy, the Recording Secretary, and Greg McNally, the Director of Planning and Community Development. On my right, ooh, Nico Hash, and, oh geez, the other guy, Nee, not Nico, but Keegan, thank you, and Roger Balls, our C A O. And we have a sign-in sheet up at the front beyond the little corral thing there. And so if you are here as a guest, I hope you will sign in and you can pick up an agenda. All right, so let us continue on. We have some consent action items. Mr. Balls, would you lead us in that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Rolfe. You have several items on the consent agenda today. I'll read them into the record. First of all, we have Item 2A, Vendor Claims Report for the week ending May 24, 2024. Marnie Bentley is here as usual, and staff recommends approval of that item. The next item is Item 2B, and that's the public meeting minutes for February 13, March 14, 28, April 23, 25, and 30, May 7, and 9, 2024, and staff recommends approval of that item. Commissioners, the next item you have is Item 2C, and it's Resolution 2024-36, ordering a refund of taxes, fees, assessments, paid by Loretta A. Herndon, in the amount of $5,228.90. Staff recommends approval of that item. Next item you have is Item 2D. It is Resolution 2024-37, ordering a refund of taxes, fees, assessments, paid by Joseph Kelly, in the amount of $711.67. Staff recommends approval of that item. Next, Commissioners, you have Item 2E, which is Resolution 2024-38, ordering a refund of taxes, fees, assessments, paid by Tim and Lillian Miller, in the amount of $3,0963.68. Staff recommends approval of that item. And Commissioners, the last item on your consent agenda today is Item 2F, and it's Resolution 2024-39, ordering a refund of taxes, fees, assessments, paid by John and Ann Wheeler, in the amount of $1,829.52. And staff recommends approval of that item as well. Commissioners, that's the end of the consent agenda items. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Actually, I had a question for Ms. for Carrie Friedland. Oh, there you are. I knew you were in here someplace. Carrie, I don't think that's turned on. No, down by your hand, there's a button.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Friedland. I am the Lewis and Clark County Property Tax Supervisor. Good morning, Tom Rolfe, and Chairman Payne.
Great. Carrie, I, these refund of taxes are kind of an unusual thing. I don't think I've seen them in the 18 months that I've been doing this. Is my mic on? Okay. And I, could you, how frequently does this happen? And how do these people receive their refund? Is it just put back in their account? Or do they, can you just give me a little detail on how this works?
Okay, so Department of Revenue back in 2015 went to a two-year reappraisal cycle instead of a six-year reappraisal cycle. So every two years, Department of Revenue goes out and fills property. And every two years, every reappraisal cycle, we find errors that taxpayers have been discovered through Montana Cadastra or their assessment notice. And under the law right now, the taxpayers can request a five-year refund going back long since they were in ownership at the time that the error occurred. So every two years, we see this. This year was a very unique year because the values were so high statewide. So I still have a few sitting on my desk that I'm working through at this point. And as Purbean paid out that, I don't handle that part of it. I know that we collected the fees, and I believe that Marnie takes care of the payables once the W9s are in place because the values are over $600. So the county can't issue a check.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. It always amazes me, all the details it takes to keep this county running. Thank you. Good job. All right. End of the question. Do we have any public comment? Do we have any public comment? Okay, we have a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move to accept consent action items A, B, C, D, E, and F, as explained by Mr. Balls and Ms. Friedland.
And I'd second that. Do we have any other further comment from the Commission?
None here.
Okay. Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number three. This is to be presented by Dick Sloan, the Upper Ten Mile. There he is. Upper Ten Mile Project Update from the Montana Department of Environmental Quality. There he is.
Let me turn that on. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioner, and, and staff. Let me just quickly. I could never speak. Presentations, electronic presentations work very well. Something simple and straightforward, I'd much rather use a piece of paper. It's not because of all the knowledge. Then I also like a copy of what I was going to talk about.
You could just put it on the table there by the agenda note behind you.
Oh, okay.
Where the sign-in sheet is, and then if people have questions. I really appreciate it when somebody gives me a hard copy of a map.
The DEQ certainly appreciates the opportunity to, to bring the Commissioners up to date, as well as the, the staff and, and the public up to date. Just real quickly, you know, the Upper Ten Mile Superfund Site has been, and I always have to chuckle when I think about it, has been an ongoing project for over 20 years. And the, the main issue, or the initial issue there was to, to reduce the public health risk, which meant remediating the, the residential properties in Remini and the residential properties in Landmark. And that went on from about 20, 2003 to roughly 2016. You know, and there was about 600,000 cubic yards of contamination removed from the yards and put in the repository. And then from 2016 to 2022, as much as we kind of hate to admit it, there basically was very little done. And it wasn't due to lack of effort or lack of cooperation or support, it was strictly due to lack of funding. Because the Upper Ten Mile Superfund Site does not have a designated responsible party. Consequently, everything that gets done there is done by tax dollars. And the funding just wasn't available. So in 2022, looking forward, we recognize that the main issue was reducing the metal loading to Ten Mile Creek. In other words, there's, there was roughly about 150 abandoned mine sites up in that watershed, and a lot of them were, were leaking contamination into the creek. And, and I realize these, these sheets are, are very detailed, but the reason I included them is to show you just, these are listing, for example, the first one is the arsenic that all of these old mine sites are putting into Ten Mile Creek. And I highlighted some of the key ones, because of that 150, there's probably only about 50 of them that contribute a significant amount of contamination to Ten Mile Creek. And what we're, what we've seen is arsenic and zinc are the primary contaminants to Ten Mile Creek that potentially have an impact on the city water supply. And like I say, I've highlighted a few of those. And we've been, the DEQ, working with EPA, has been addressing those as we've, as we've had the funding. And, and for example, there's already a number of what I would call passive treatment systems. There's actually eight passive treatment systems up into the, up in this watershed that are addressing specific abandoned mines. For example, the, and I'm going to rattle off a bunch of names, but they're all on the table here. You know, the Evergreen 1, 2, and 3, were all significant loaders. Those have a, a passive treatment systems in place. You know, the Johnny 1, and the Johnny 2, and the Peerless King, Peerless Jenny also have passive treatments and systems in place. And the real key going forward is we need to build, design and build three fairly major water treatment plants up in the watershed. And those are part of the project, you know, going forward. And if you look beyond the data sheets, there's, there's a summary, you know, of the priorities going forward. The main priority right now is to complete the remediation in the, in the Landmark area and, and to complete the remediation of what's called the Minnehaha Mine Sites, because that again is a major source of, of the city of Helena drinking water. And there's significant levels of, of zinc and some arsenic, but mainly zinc, that are coming from five mines in the Minnehaha Drainage. So those are what we are, are working on now. And then as we get into the future, you know, we, we have a logical plan here. And the first one's going to be to, to update the water treatment plant at the Latrell Repository. We're currently spending about $900,000 a year treating water there. And we need, we want to convert that to a, to a sulfate-reducing system, which will cut those costs down by hopefully, hopefully about half a million dollars. Am I right, Javen? Or somewhere in there? And then the...
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Please.
I did some work for the city on their Ten Mile rights that involve the Chessman Reservoir. And I'm, so I'm familiar with the area. Could you, the treatment plant that you're right now discussing, is that the main treatment plant right off the highway headed toward Missoula?
Uh, no. The treatment plant we're talking about is the treatment plant at the repository up on the Continental Divide.
Okay.
That's been up there for about, about 10 years. Because the contamination that we've removed from the yards has been placed in a repository. And the repository, there's a leachate comes off of there that needs to be treated. Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the, the treatment plants we're talking about, the three new ones we'll be building, is one that's on, on Banner Creek, which is the old National Extension Mines. And that's a significant, you know, if you notice on this map here, that's, that's off on the left-hand side, and, and that's a significant loader of contamination into that creek. But that creek is also a source of the, of drinking water to Helena. And then the other place where we'll be building a water treatment plant is in an area called Popper's Creek, Popper's Pit, and Monitor Creek, which again is a high source of zinc, which is way up in the watershed. And then right in Remini, Remini, if you'll notice on the, on the data sheets, and sorry to keep bouncing you back and forth, but if you look at Lee Mountain, Susie, and National Extension, those three mines, for example, if, if you look at zinc, those three mines add about 80% of the zinc loading to Ten Mile Creek. And it goes zinc loading is a major issue for the city. And so we will be building a, we're, we're designing, build a water treatment plant that will treat those three. And you'll notice National Extension, so by taking care of those three major ones, we will have reduced loading to, to Ten Mile Creek by about 80%.
Another question. Where's the money coming from?
Yeah, let me, let me flip, let's just flip over to the last page here, which is, which is just a summary of all of the tasks for '24 through '28. And if you look on the bottom there, the estimated cost rate now is above $31 million. We have the $7 million now to do the 2024 work. We're hoping to tie into some of the, the, the bill funding for, for the balance of this. But, but to answer your question straightforward, beyond 2025, obviously, the money's going to have to come from the federal government, but we don't know exactly where. So, so we have the next couple of years covered, but I'll be, we don't have the $31 million covered.
I'm just glad it's not coming through the county budget. Thank you.
No, it is not. And, and I'm sure my bosses are glad it's not coming through the, not coming through the, the state budget. Just a couple of comments here. You know, you know, we've looked, worked, the, certainly appreciate the support from the city, you know, from, or the county, rather, from Kevin and Jenny and others, because we are obviously using county roads. This year, we won't have a significant impact on county roads, but in the future, we certainly will. And, and we expect to be coordinating closely with the county and with the Forest Service as the, there's roughly going to be about, oh, between 25 and 30,000 cubic yards of material that'll be going from Landmark and Minnehaha Creek up to the repository. And this year, we, we will be using the main highway from Landmark up to the Minnehaha Turnoff. But we did have our contractor put a weigh scale in, because I'm sure a lot of you work with contractors. I got to make sure that none of them behind me that are going to throw something. But contractors without weigh tickets, you're never quite sure just what they're hauling in terms of weight. So we've insisted that the contractor put in a weigh scale, so everything will be weighed that goes on the, goes on the Remini Road and up over, over and, and along the actual Great Divide Road.
Okay.
So, so I, I realize there's kind of a, a lot of detail, but I thought it was important for people to understand for the future, it's really being driven by the metal loading. And all of the focus here is to try to get the metal loading reduced so that, because the problem right now with zinc is the city really doesn't have a problem with the potable water supply. It's, once the, the water is treated, it's meeting the zinc discharge standard. And, and I'm sure you understand that. It's, it's, humans can handle a lot of zinc. Fish can't. The, the criteria for humans is 2,000 parts per billion. The criteria for aquatic toxicity is between 35 and 40. So the real issue here is reducing the zinc content. So the city would, otherwise would have to invest probably $50, $60 million in a water treatment system. So what we're looking at here is spending $31 million taking care of the, taking care of the problem.
All right. Well, thank you for that presentation.
And, and just, just a quick comment. I have a couple of the engineers with our contractor here. Did you guys have any comments, anything you wanted to, anything you wanted to add or emphasize?
Maybe, maybe they could at least state their name for the record so that we have that clear. Stand up. Nadine, do they need to speak into the microphone? Yeah, you better come up and speak. We, we are recording all of this, so.
It's Chapin Strar with CDM Smith Engineering. And I'll leave some fact sheets, kind of updates about the project, less detailed than what Dick had here, just on the stand up here.
Thank you very much.
And Trent Thomas, CDM Smith.
Would you spell your last name, please?
T H O M A S.
Thank you. The lady over there is keeping track of all this, so I'm trying to help her out. Do you have any questions on the Commission?
Yes, I guess the one question I'd have is, was, is the city water supply from this drainage going to be shut down at any time while this is being done?
Uh, no. The, the city has a, a series of diversions which they can use. For, for example, they have a diversion just upstream of Remini, where they basically divert the water before it becomes contaminated essentially. And then they have a diversion at Minnehaha Creek. They have actually four diversions in the watershed, so they kind of pick and choose the water. And I don't mean to be facetious here, they, they can pick and choose the water before it gets contaminated.
All right.
Yeah. And they do an excellent job of that.
All right.
So they have options, depending on if we're having a torrential rainfall and one mountain is washing all this in, or if there's, it's nice to know they have options.
Yeah, they have options. And if push comes to shove, of course, the city can get water out of the Missouri.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. And this is the first right on Ten Mile Creek.
Yes.
And it is related to the Chessman mining claim from many, many years ago, right during the top of the first gold rush. And this, this is so important to me.
Yeah, the mining claims, there were roughly, like I say, 150, 160 mines. And initially, the emphasis was on gold and silver. And then in later years, the emphasis was on, was on copper, lead, zinc, and arsenic in terms of...
The emphasis was on making money.
Yes, the emphasis was on making money, which is not a bad thing.
No, we are capitalists. Okay, well, do you have any further questions, Tom?
No.
Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, and we have a motion, Tom?
I don't, I don't believe a motion is necessary on this. No actions needed here.
What we have to do is say thank you very much for the presentation. I always find these things just fascinating, so thank you for coming in.
Yes, thank you. And I do want to again thank the city staff because they've been very, very supportive.
As they should be. Okay, moving right along, item number four on today's agenda. Bid opening, oh my God, this is all my favorite stuff. This is the bid opening on the Country Club Road overlay, but this is something I've been kicking on the door when I was out there campaigning. So bless your heart, Dan.
All right, Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Dan Carlin, County Engineer. And today, we're doing a bid opening for the Country Club Overlay Project. Generally, this is going to be a two-inch overlay, asphalt overlay of Country Club Road from the city line to Williams Street. We have two bids today. The first one I have is from Helena Sand and Gravel. All right, so we have the appropriate documents included and a completed bid that is signed. We have two schedules for this bid. So we have two grades of asphalt that we wanted to get a price on. We intend to use the highest grade of asphalt that we can within our budget. So the first schedule would be for our higher grade of asphalt, which is a PG 7028. PG stands for performance grade. The total bid amount for Schedule 1 is $274,316.50. Their Schedule 2 bid price, which is for a performance grade 6428 asphalt, of $270,355.00 and no cents. Our second bid is from Hoffman R and M Services and Excavation. All right, we have a complete bid. We have the bid bond attached. We have it's... We have it signed and notarized. We have a Schedule One bid of $337,387.0 and no cents. Schedule Two of $332,105.0 and no cents. Yes, staff would like to take these bids under advisement, review them a little more detailed, and then come back to the commission on June 6th with the recommendation for award.
Do we need a a motion on this?
A public comment.
Oh, public comment. Thanks. I'm new at this, you know.
Questions and then public.
Are there any? Do you have any questions here?
No.
Do you have is there any public comment on this bid opening? We need a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that the the staff take these two bids under advisement and bring them back for a recommendation on June 6th meeting.
Um, I'd second that. And further comment?
No.
All right, all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Go forth and do good work, Dan. Item number five, bid opening on the Country Club Chip Seal, also by our friend, Mr. Carlin.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, again, Dan Carlin, County Engineer for the record. And we now have a bid opening for the Country Club Chip Fog and Paint Project. So how this generally works construction-wise is we we do an asphalt overlay, and then we'd like to come over the top of that with our chip seal and then fog seal, followed by epoxy paint to complete the project. So two separate bids on this. I have two bids today. The first one is from Bullet Contracting out of Boulder, Montana. So we have a completed bid on this project, attached his bid bond and signed and sealed it. We have a total bid of $86,073.68. The second bid we have is from Helena Sand and Gravel out of Helena, Montana. Then we have a complete bid. Bid bond is attached, bid is signed, and we have a total bid of $113,222.32. Staff would also like to take this bid under advisement and come back on June 6th with a recommendation for award.
Um, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that we send this these two bids to staff for study and that they would bring it back to us on June 6th with a recommendation.
Uh, second. Let's see, do we have any more public comment?
No.
Do we have any commission public comment? Um, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Ah, another one. Wow, go for it, Dan.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, again, Dan Carlin for the for the record. Today, we're going to talk about the Montana Coal Endowment Program Planning Grant Award Agreement. Before you today is an agreement between the Department of Commerce and Lewis and Clark County to provide grant funds from the Montana Coal Endowment Program, or MSEP. The grant is in the amount of $32,000 to complete a preliminary engineering report, or PER, that meets the requirements and follows the format of the most recent edition of the Uniform PER Outline, limited administration of the contract pursuant to the most current version of the MSEP Administration Guidelines for Infrastructure Planning Grants, and to submit one electronic copy of the PER to the department. The planning grant has a match of 20% or up to $8,000 for total project cost of $40,000. We have selected the Augusta Clemens Bridge for the P this PER and will further use the PER to support an application to MSEP for a construction grant for the project. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the grant funding agreement and authorize the chair to sign. And on your screen, you should have a map of the location of this bridge or your orientation to where this is in the county. You can see it's it's just a couple miles outside of Augusta.
And for the public's knowledge, we have toured this bridge. It was about a year ago, but we've talked about it at our Augusta meeting.
I you know, this opportunity, if I might comment, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay.
Um, it appears it appears to me, and I'm totally untrained in engineering, but it just appears to me that this will has a good chance of of reducing the amount of water going down the Main Street of Augusta if they do have another flood.
Let's hope so.
Just because of the volume of water that might go under the said the the new planned bridge, so I think it looks like a good thing.
Okay, um, do we have any public comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the grant award contract between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Commerce as explained by Mr. Carlin.
Second, is there further comments?
You might ask for public comment.
Oh, that was next. Is there any public comment? Oh, all right. Um, it's been motion it has been moved and seconded to approve the grant award contract between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Commerce as presented by Dan Carlin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next on our agenda, number seven, Resolution 2024-35, intention to create the Orifino Rural Improvement District Number 2024-2, presented by Jessica Makas. And she's got a map for us.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe. My name is Jessica Makas, Special Districts Program Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is public hearing regarding Resolution 2024-35, intention to create the Orifino Rural Improvement District. A petition to create the district was received by staff for the purpose of improving and maintaining Menlo Park Road, Load Star Road, Home State Drive, and a portion of Bernice Drive. As you look at the map, it's the one in the dark pink right in the center. The proposed district is located to the west of North Montana Avenue, directly across North Montana from the Treasure State Acres subdivision. The original Orifino RID was created in 1994 to maintain roads within the district. The improvements on these roads have reached the end of their functional life and no longer benefit from maintenance. Staff held an evening meeting to discuss the condition of the road network and recommended property owners consider improvements to the road network through a new rural improvement district. Property owners circulated a petition to repave the road network in Orifino, and the petition was signed by 75% of property owners within the proposed district, satisfying Lewis and Clark County Lewis and Clark County's policy to consider RID petitions signed by at least 20% of property owners. There are 36 benefiting properties included in the proposed district boundary. The general character of improvements includes asphalt paving and chip sealing on the full extent of Menlo Park Road, the full extent of Home State Drive, the existing hard surface portion of Load Star Road from North Montana to Bernice Drive, and approximately 487 feet of Bernice Drive, starting at Menlo Park Road. Financing of these improvements is estimated to total $317,641. Each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a 15-year debt service assessment of $909 annually. The general character of maintenance includes, but is not limited to, snow plowing and sanding, pothole patching, crack sealing, sweeping, chip sealing, drainage maintenance, and other maintenance as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total $8,280, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a maintenance assessment of $230 per year. The estimated total proposed assessment is $1,139 per property per year for the first 15 years, and then dropping to the maintenance assessment after the improvement is paid off. If the district is created, each property would be assessed an equal amount for the improvements and maintenance for the Orifino RID based on the total cost of improvements and maintenance. Additionally, if the new RID is created, this would replace the current RID with the same boundaries and would move forward to dissolve the current RID for Orifino and transfer any remaining fund balance to the new Orifino RID. If the resolution of intention to create the district is passed today, legal notice of the resolution will be advertised in the Helena Independent Record the next two Saturdays. Legal notice will also be mailed to all benefiting property owners, and public comment will be accepted until 4:00 PM on Friday, June 28, 2024, at the Lewis and Clark County Clerk and Recorder's Office. The public hearing for the resolution to create the district would be scheduled for July 2, 2024, at 9:00 AM in this room. Anyone who would like more information on the proposed resolution to create the district can contact me at the Lewis and Clark County Public Works Department. Staff recommend the board approve Resolution 2024-35, intention to create the Orifino Rural Improvement District and open the 30-day comment and protest period. Thank you.
I've got a question, Madam Chair.
Go for it.
Um, the map we show here includes the Harrah's Coltsack there, but the map on the paperwork does not. Could you clarify that for me?
Um, sure, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, I believe that there is also the Orifino Park RID that is overshadowing the boundary here. Let me um, let me just re-select the Orifino RID, and it'll highlight it, and I'll show you that actual boundary on the map. The Harrah's Court subdivision right off of North Montana Avenue is not included with this proposed Rural Improvement District today. Madam Chair, Commissioner, it's it's hard with that that pop-up box that comes up, but you can see now with the blue highlight around the area, it does not include that court. And and that's a great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have any public comment? Seeing none. Um, I I do have a comment. I'm very impressed to get 75%. Um, that's outstanding. So, um, we get a motion to regarding resolution to approve Resolution 2024-35, intention to create the Orifino Rural Improvement District Number 2024-2 as presented by Ms. Makas.
So moved, Miss Madam Chair.
Second, it has been moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Just just one comment before we.
I'm sorry.
Vote, I think.
I'm working on it. I'm getting better.
I just I just want to thank the the staff for a great job here with this kind of a turnout for supporting it. Clear indication that this is what the folks want. I know that some counties don't require the numbers we do to get a an RID started. Um, and I just, but I think you've done an exceptional job on this one to get a the people obviously very much want this and appreciate it very much. Thank you for the for the great job.
Uh, any further public comment? All right, let's see, we did the motion, right? All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2024-35 for the intention to create the Orifino Rural Improvement District Number 2024-2 as presented by Jessica Makas indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, motion is carried. All right. Item number eight is for the extended warranty between Lewis and Clark County and Nomad GCS as presented by Sergeant Homland. Why, everybody got mad. Where'd everybody go?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe and staff. For the record, my name is Greg Homland, Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office. I'm here this morning to ask the commission's consideration for an extended warranty with Nomad GCS for the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office new command vehicle. The warranty would go into effect May of 2025 and would be in effect through May of 2032. The total purchase price is $228,733.34, which would be broken to seven annual payments of $32,676.19. The reason we feel this is important is because the purchase of the truck, as you guys know, was just shy of $1.2 million. Couple hundred thousand of that was for the truck and shelter. Everything else in that is the technology aspect of it. This warranty would cover this truck bumper to bumper, including the chassis, which would would outlive the warranty from Freightliner. Uh, the technology aspect of it is why we wanted this truck and why it was so important to all of us. If that goes down, it's no good to us. So the warranty covers us for seven years. The appealing part about this is if we're in the middle of a mission, no matter where that's at, say we're up in the benchmark, and something fails, and they remote in and can't fix it, they guarantee to have a tech to us in 24 hours so that we don't interrupt our service longer than that. So I'm here to answer questions if I can, but it's something that the sheriff and I believe strongly that we need to have to maintain the operability of the truck.
Uh, thank you. Would this sheriff and the would you want to say anything, Leo?
Madam, for the record, my name is Leo Dutton, Sheriff Coroner, D U T T O N. Madam Commissioner, Mr. Commissioner Rolfe, thank you for the opportunity. And as with you too, an elected official never really turns down the opportunity to work his way around or her way around the mic. This is a long project, and I want to make sure and give lode to Sergeant Homland for a work well done. We're not there exactly. We will be working on a presentation of this vehicle, and I think you'll be amply impressed. This warranty is actually for eight years because the first year it's covered by the manufacturer. So the actual what we're buying is seven years. So the first year is covered by the warranty of the equipment, but to maintain the level of proficiency of five nines, which is what we build public safety to. Example, four nines is a reliable system, and you would have 17 to 20 minutes of downtime that would affect public safety, such as 911, or not being able to use a phone, not being able to have connectivity. Five nines of reliability is four minutes. So when we're specking something out, we look at what's the longest we could be down. We have to look at location, the sales, location, location, location. Where are we going to be? Where are we going to be? What's the roughest place? When we have a critical element or a single point of failure, what is the least amount of impact? Yes, it will pay. This will come out of our budget each year for the $32,000. But we have put that in, brought the new finance gal, and she's worked with Frank, and I don't know, I think we hit it from Roger. I'm kidding, Roger. Anyway, but we have that specked out. As when you buy a vehicle, you need insurance on it. You need the opportunities to have it work. So that's why we're buying this, and we ask that you give it a due pass, and we'll have it in our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any more questions?
Okay. Just a comment, if I might. I was an advocate for the purchase of the command vehicle, just looking at it as an opportunity to really protect our people better here in the county and potentially help other counties around us that might have a need. And it looks like a good thing. So I was concerned about where the money was coming from. I'm glad that you've got it figured in for future budgets. That part of, you know, we had always said we wanted to try to use these, this money for one-time purchases and not ongoing, but there's bound to be an expense down the road. And this is a good protection for the, for the piece of, this fine piece of equipment. Looking forward to getting a tour of it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I have a question. Does this warranty include any upgrades in the technology currently in the vehicle?
I believe it does. They will come through, you remember? At least that's my recollection.
So part of the warranty includes their service department coming to us once a year. They will service the entire truck bumper to bumper. Anything that cannot be repaired, they will replace with the upgraded version of that. So as the sheriff said, Commissioner Rolf and I were both in the automotive industry. We understand these warranties. Some are good, some are bad. These guys did try to implement it right away. We said, no, if we're paying for it, it's going to start after the first year. So we have eight years of coverage. Eight years is probably longer than technology lasts, so we're protected there because if something fails or is no longer supported, then they have to upgrade it for us at no cost. So, but it does include an annual service on everything.
Okay, thank you. That certainly takes care of my question.
Madam Commissioner, one thing I would like to add is the computers that will be in there, you'll see it has multiple workstations. We didn't go out and buy all new computers. We designed it to where we will be using mobile data terminals that we already have. We'll have an HDMI cord. I tried to think as many acronyms as I could for you.
I'm sure you did.
Yes, and I have about 20 more.
What's an HDMI?
It's a high-density, I don't know, but I know it's a cord that allows more, it's a bigger pipe that allows technology to roll through from your computer into the mainframe system. The system has a mainframe computer, a rack, a LAN, all of those. See, I told you, I was going to try to think of everything. Routers that will take care of all of the electronics.
Why don't we have like a deputy sheriff in here with a hook to get rid of these? Sorry, I digress. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Anyway, you'll get a tour.
I want to.
We will, not only that, we'll, when it's up and running with 100% proficiency, we'll schedule, with your schedule, all of yours, a ribbon cutting, I think would be appropriate, that we spent, we got a substantial piece of equipment, as Commissioner Rolf said, that we can roll in and help with public safety, help people with being safer by communications, by communications from federal, state, and local partners. You'll see, it's an impressive piece of equipment that you had a large part in doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Under Sheriff, did you have anything?
Say, did Under Sheriff Greg want to say anything? Do you want to be public?
See you at the ribbon.
Okay. The other person I would like to have come up is, I assume this is your new financial-
Oh, yes.
-lady? I would like to have her introduced to the commission. Actually, I've visited with her myself, but let's do it formally.
Commissioners, this is Sherri Martin, our new finance coordinator.
Would you spell the last name, please?
M-A-R-T-I-N. Martin.
Oh, Martin, okay. Thank you.
Common spelling.
Common, okay. I, your pronunciation was a little garbled.
Good morning.
Where do you come to us from?
I was born and raised in Glasgow. I married a marine officer, spent 25 years traveling around the country, living all over, traveling the world, and came back to Helena to finish raising our children and be back in Montana.
Okay. Actually, what I meant was, have you always worked in the sheriff's department, or did you used to work for D?
When I came back, I've always worked in banking, or bookkeeping, or volunteered in bookkeeping, and I went to the school district, was a bookkeeper, went to technology, worked on their finances, and then was offered the job with the sheriff's office.
Well, welcome to our little happy family of county people that work on all these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you, just for the point of clarification that the sheriff's office, just helping you out. I want you to be successful.
And I want to be, and I apologize for the misnomer. It is not intentional. It's, you know, a lot of us still call you Leo because we've known you for so long.
And that's fine, Madam Commissioner.
Okay. Let's see, did we get the public comment? Yes, okay. Can I have a motion to accept, to approve the extended warranty between Lewis and Clark County and Nomad GCS as presented by Sergeant Homland?
Second. I mean, motion, I'm sorry.
So moved.
So moved, sorry about that.
Okay, second. Is there any further comment from the commission? Seeing none. Let's have a vote, all in favor of the extended warranty, or all in favor of approving the extended warranty between Lewis and Clark County and Nomad GCS indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Number nine on our agenda is a grant contract between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Environmental Quality. Whoop, what did I miss? That's right, you're here instead of Laurel. Correct. Thank you. Yesterday, I, well. So, good morning, Drenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner Rolf. My name is Drenda Neiman. I'm the Director and Health Officer for Lewis and Clark Public Health. I'm here on behalf of Laurel, who was not able to be here this morning. And today, we bring before you a renewal grant award from our longstanding Lewis and Clark County Air Pollution Control Program between Montana Department of Environmental Quality and Lewis and Clark Public Health. These funds total $42,454 for the period between July 1, 2024, and June 30, 2026. This grant helps us to support the following activities. We maintain and operate a continuous air monitoring system at Rossiter Elementary School out in the valley. This collects hourly particulate information. Fine particulate air pollution, also known as PM 2.5, is the very small particulates and gases that can enter our lungs and cause irritation like coughing. People with existing illnesses such as asthma, COPD, and heart problems can experience a worsening of their symptoms as the particulate levels increase in our area. These PM 2.5 concentrations are measured at Rossiter Elementary School and reported to the Department, Montana Department of Environmental Quality, as well as the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. The information is used to provide health assessments for 24-hour periods and are also published on the DEQ website called Today's Air. The Health Department enforces and administers the Lewis and Clark County Clean Air Ordinance, which is intended to reduce the particulate population during the winter months when inversions can trap smoke in the valley. And this ordinance was put into place back in the late 1990s, and part of, part of the information that helped to reach the conclusion for the ordinance was a study that was conducted by the University of Montana that indicated that 60% of our winter particulate pollution originated from our residential wood smoke. We also use air quality information we collect to assess public health risks for wildfire smoke during the summer, the summer season. We issue alerts and provide education to residents, schools, and daycares with recommendations for outdoor activities based on air quality conditions. Further, we send out a daily email to interested persons during poor winter air quality episodes and also summer wildfire events, so residents in our area can make informed decisions to protect their health. So with that, staff recommends approval.
Do you have any questions from the commission?
No, this is, I believe, an ongoing program for several years, and it's something we just deal with every, every couple of years.
I just have a little question. This is strictly at Rossiter School, so it only impacts the residents of the Helena Valley? This doesn't have any benefit for Lincoln or Augusta or Wolf Creek, or is that correct?
Correct. Madam Chair, the, our air, our air pollution issues really happen because of the inversions that we experience in the wintertime in the valley. And so we, the monitor was placed at Rossiter School for that very reason, so that we can monitor the PM 2.5 concentrations in the valley. So the, we don't experience the same air quality issues in Lincoln or Augusta or other parts of the county. It really is, it really is an issue that we deal with here in the valley.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. We need to have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move to accept the grant contract between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Environmental Quality, as explained by Ms. Neiman.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Okay. Number 10 on today's list of events, contract extension between Lewis and Clark County and Diamond Construction Incorporated, as presented by Pam Etardo.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Pam Etardo, and I'm the Historic Preservation Officer for the city and county. And these are three contracts before us, and I'm just focused on the first one here, number 10. So this is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Diamond Construction, and this is for the Unionville School, an ongoing project that we've been working on for the past year. So I am extending this contract, asking for extension of this contract because we have a grant from the Foundation for Montana History, and their deadline for the grant report was due June 1. So we were going to try and shoehorn this in and get it done before then. They've actually extended it for us until August 30, and that is why these three contracts are being extended. So this is, Diamond Construction is for the repair of the rafters of the school and also hanging drywall. They will not be doing the taping that will be done by volunteers, so we are hoping that they get that done here soon. We're also waiting for some structural plans before they start that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
No.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Ask, I need to have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that we accept the contract extension between Lewis and Clark County and Diamond Construction Incorporated, as explained by Ms. Etardo.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This extension is approved by the county commission. Thank you. Number 11, extension, contract extension between Lewis and Clark County and Eagle Electric Incorporated.
Again, this is another contract that we are extending. The majority of this contract has been completed. The electrician is waiting for the drywall to be hung by Diamond Construction before he can put the, the light fixtures on in the vestibule area. So that's what's, that's the reason for this extension. Again, it will be until, until August 26, 2024, right before the grant report is due, so we have some time to get that report done.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No questions.
Any public comment? Seeing none. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the contract extension between Lewis and Clark County and Eagle Electric Incorporated, as explained by Ms. Etardo.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Whoop, maybe we have to have a public comment here.
Ask for general comment.
Do we have general comment?
No comment from the commission.
Do we have any comments from the general?
There are, none.
Do we have any public comment?
No.
All right. So, all in favor of the motion as expressed by Commissioner Rolf, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The extension with the contract with Staley Engineering is approved.
Eagle. Eagle Electric.
Eagle Electric, okay. Staley is the next one, sorry. Okay, so we have approved the Eagle Electric one. All right. Number 11.
12.
That was 11. 12. We have, this is a contract extension between Lewis and Clark County and Staley Engineering and Associates, as presented by Pam Etardo. Please.
Okay, and this is the third contract that we are extending. Staley Engineering is preparing plans for the rafters in the Unionville School that Diamond Construction will follow. That was our number 10 contract, the first contract. So again, extending it to August 26, 2024, to accommodate that extended grant report from the Foundation for Montana History.
Are there any questions from the commission?
I have no questions.
Are there any public comment? Seeing none. I have a motion?
Chair, I move that we accept the contract, approve the contract extension between Lewis and Clark County and Staley Engineering and Associates, as explained by Ms. Etardo.
Second. Is there any further comment?
None.
All right. And let's have a vote on this, all in favor of approving this contract extension, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The contract extension is approved.
Thank you very much.
Ah, aha. Item number 13 is the election update from our friends downstairs, Amy and Connor. How goes the Mad House?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections Division Supervisor, Amy Reeves, Lewis and Clark County Elections Administrator, as well as several other titles. To answer your question directly, the Mad House goes all right. To kick off, last time I was up here, I mentioned we had a bit of a swap with some of our precincts. Those have been mailed out. We have been getting a lot of folks calling us going, what is going on? It's like, it's okay, we just made a mistake. Take the reissued one, vote that guy. If you've already voted the other one, vote the reissue. We won't give you any issues with double voting. Let's take the reissued one because that is the one that is totally square. So if you've already voted, though, please vote the reissue. If you don't get it- If you don't get a chance to vote the reissue, uh, we will work with the one we got, and we'll go from there. Beyond that, Amy's got a few items to, uh, bring forward, and, uh, happy to answer any questions you've got as well.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolf, we do want to mention, if they do submit that re-
You probably better introduce yourself.
Amy Reeves, Lewis and Clark County Treasurer, Clerk and Recorder, Election Administrator, and a few other things. If they do send in that reissued ballot, we also ask them to make sure they use their affirmation envelope, because the one we resent out is marked reissue, so that we know which one is their new ballot. The old one will be voided, and we will be able to accept their new ballot. If they do not vote that second ballot, we do have their original ballot. Those individuals that are in the county that would have had to vote for the school, or they, sorry, the city, we've just done with our school election, excuse me, um, we are able to transcribe those ballots onto the correct ballot, and they would not be voting this, the city, um, issues. Those that are in the city, though, if they don't send in that new ballot, would not get a chance to vote on those city, um, issues. So, we want to make sure that they do send those in, for sure. All right, and then a few other things that we wanted to mention, too, is, we always want to remind our voters to mail their ballots in, in time, and the post office is not always available to get it to us right away. You know, a lot of our mail goes up to Great Falls. They do try to help us and, and keep it here in Helena, but things do slip through the cracks. So, we always suggest that the week before the election, please just hand drop off that ballot and bring it to us. Our office is taking them. If you hand drop it off to us, you can go on to myvoterpage.com, right, dot com?
Myvoterpage.
Myvoterpage. Okay, and they can look at that to see that we have received their ballot, so that they're insured. I know we have a lot of interested people, and it's a very cool app that they can use, or website they can use. So, if they don't do that, they can also drop them off on the poll, at the polling places on election day, but it's always about a day for us to get that, um, taken in and scanned and, um, signatures verified, so they wouldn't be able to check that MyVoterPage to see that we got it until after the election. So, um, for them to ensure that we have it, it would be better for them just to drop it off. The next day, they'd be able to check MyVoterPage and see that it was scanned and we have received it in our office. A few other things we want to mention, too, is that, um, when we do have voters bring in their ballots, we're able to start processing, checking signatures, and doing all those things. So, it also helps us get our, our results out a little bit sooner, so we are encouraging that early drop-off. We have a third part, three-party ballots, so on the primary ballot, our voters received, or will receive at the polls, three-party ballots. They'll have one for each party, the Democrat, the Green Party, and the Republican. They are only to vote one of those ballots. We do not, um, know which ballot they're going to vote, it's kept secret, so when they put their voted ballot back in their secrecy envelope and mail those back to us, if they're an absentee voter, we don't know which party that they chose to vote, and then when they're at the polling place, they'll have a sleeve that they put their voted ballot in and then the non-voted. We do not want the non-voted ballots returned to us if it's a male, uh, absentee voter. We don't need those other ballots back. They changed the law on that, in the last couple of years. And then we want to also remind our voters to sign their affirmation envelope. Most people do, but every once in a while, someone forgets to sign it. So, if they can make sure that they have that signed before they return it to us, we do verify those signatures. If it's not signed, or if the signature has changed from what we have in our office, we would be, um, contacting that voter, either by mail or by phone. Usually, until we can get a good response from the voter, we try all our options to make sure we can get those cleared back up. Um, and then we also have a few things coming up. We have our public test for our election, so we always do our public test at 9:00 a.m. the Friday before election. We do invite the public to come and watch the process. Depending on the election itself, changes how long the public test takes. That is in the basement of the City-County Building in room 007. Most of our counting is in the, um, 007 or, or, uh, 005 room.
Amy, I have no idea which room you're talking about, 007?
Um, in the basement, excuse me, Commissioner, and Chairman, Commissioner, um, we have 007 is one of our basement rooms, in our basement of the City-County Building, where instead of 101 or 102 in the first or second floor, it's by number, so it starts with a zero, because it's in the basement, so 007. So, if they come down to the basement of the City-County Building, they can look for 007. And that room will be open. Again, we'll have people there at 9:00 a.m. on Friday before, for the public test. We also will be having some early opening of the absentee ballot, um, secrecy envelopes on Thursday and Friday, I believe both starting at 9:00 a.m., that we can have observers come watch. And then we have the counting of the ballots, which will start on Monday, because we are a larger counter, we, we are able to start counting on Monday, and that will start at 8:00 a.m., and we'll start counting at 7:00 a.m. Again, all of this is in the basement of the City-County Building. They can stop in our office on, um, the first floor, room 168, to get a name tag and to sign in. And then finally, we'll have, after everything is counted, we have a post-election audit that we do. This is something that's required by the state of Montana, and the Secretary of State will let us know which precincts that, or ballot styles that we have to, um, do our audit on. They'll let us know what races we have to audit, and that is also open to the public, and that will be held at, um, on June 14th, I believe, at 8:00 o'clock, or 8:30, also in the basement, in the same room, 007. And then we will also be having our final canvas on June 17th, no, that changed, on June 18th, at 1:00, I believe, um, in the City-County Building. We will be posting, um, some of those room numbers as we get closer. Okay, excuse me, we had a, we had a rescheduling issue to give us a little bit more time to prepare our canvas, so we are going to have our post-election audit on the 17th instead, on Monday, the 17th, always usually the day before the canvas, unless we have a recount. So, but that is our plan for now. If there's a recount, we will be putting stuff out on our county Facebook and on our county website, and in the newspaper.
It never ceases to amaze me how much your office gets done during this time of year. So, thank you for the presentation. Do you have any questions?
And just, uh, if I understand it right, we've got 36, 37 precincts, is that right?
Um, Commissioner Rolf, wait, and, sorry, Chair, Commissioner Rolf, we have 32 precincts, but with this election being a, um, the first time in 10 years that we've had to do our government review, we do it every 10 years, there is a issue on the ballot for East Helena, Helena, and then Lewis and Clark County as a whole, so even if you're in the city, you would have that Lewis and Clark County option to, to, um, vote on. That is causing our precincts to be split, so even though we have 32 precincts, all in all, by all the splits, we'll have a total of 45 different ballot styles. So, um, it depends on where you're living, but if you happen to be right on the border of the city, and your, your person across the street may have a city ballot in the same precinct that you may have, but you would have a county ballot.
So, if, um, if we've got 32 precincts, and there were errors only in three precincts, so maybe, uh, 10% of the, of the people would, would have a, uh, the extra ballot sent out, is that right?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioner, we did have a issue with about 551 city residents that got the wrong ballot, and about 2,700 county residents that got the wrong ballot, and they were flip-flopped. We're dealing with a new system, and we have ballot styles, but then we also have ballot style names, and the ballot style name was attached to the wrong ballot style. It just got flip-flopped within the precinct.
So, those, if, if I might, uh, continue, uh, only those people in those three precincts would be affected, and none of the people that, that vote at the polls are affected because it's corrected before they get to the polls. So, it's only those who, who receive mail ballots in those three precincts.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, you are correct. The polling places will all be fine at that point. We had the correct ballot itself, we just were, um, directed from our system because of that swap to mail the incorrect ballot to the, um, citizen.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, thank you, I appreciate the presentation. Do I need to ask for public comment on this? Okay, do we have any, uh-oh. The Sheriff's Department approaches.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, Under Sheriff Frank Colbert from Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office. I would like to commend Amy Reeves and her crew, because as you know very well, that they do an excellent job, and it's very tough during this time. And I always looked forward to the election times, when I was still on patrol and got to help them and assist them in picking up the ballots and delivering them here, which we will continue to do, that partnership in this election and all of the other elections. So, thank you, Amy. Appreciate that.
Good. Thank you, public. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I think, um, you can get back to work now. Thank you. Um, I don't believe there's any further business for this tribunal to discuss. Roger, you're agreeing?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, if you haven't already, just a public comment on any public matter, uh, within the jurisdiction of the commission, please. The last item.
Thank you. You're right. Is there any public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda above? Don't be bashful, come on forward. Seeing none, we are adjourned.